All right, good evening. At 6:00 PM, March 22nd, 2023, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being televised live on local Channel 18. If we could all rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, you have three minutes to make your statement. Okay, no takers, it looks like. All right, I'm going to ask for a public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. All right, Bill Blaisdell is absent tonight, so sitting on our first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as Sharon. Sharon, would you read the first and only continued hearing?
425 Nathan Ellis Highway. Owner, Mashpee 151 Properties LLC, requests a modification to an existing special permit, SP 9773, under 174-24(c)(9) and 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of 1,800 square feet addition to the rear of the existing retail building on property located in an R3 in C2 zoning district. MAP 72, parcel 56, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 8th, 2023, hearing at the request of the board.
All right, I believe we have some, a letter on this. Would you read that in, Sharon?
Yes. I have a letter dated March 21st, 2023, from Christopher J. Curran. Dear Chairman Ferbush, as you know, we represent the property owner referenced above, Mashpee 151 Properties LLC. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, March 22nd, 2022, hearing to be continued to April 12th, 2023, to allow the project's engineer time to review and respond to Ed Pesci's comments to the plans, and in turn allow Mr. Pesci an opportunity to review, for review of those revisions. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Curran.
All right, Ron, would you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the request for an extension by 151 Properties attorney, Christopher Curran. Letter dated March 21st, 2023, said request for extension is up until April 12th, 2023.
Sergeant. Okay, Jim seconds. We'll do a roll call vote. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Nothing to sign, right? Except me. Okay, George, you're going to sit on the next one. Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
90 Pompanesett Island Road. Owner Brendan P. Giblin requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with associated cooled detached garage with guest suite above on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 106, parcel 34, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, I think we also have a letter on this one. Can you read that?
I have a letter dated March 15th, 2023, in regards to 90 Pompanesett Island Road. Dear Chairman Ferbush, as you know, we represent the property owners, the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that the Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023, hearing be continued to April 12th, 2023, as we are awaiting conservation commission's approval, which meeting will not take place until after March 22nd. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Christopher J. Curran.
All right, Ron, would you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the request for an extension by Brendan Giblin's attorney, Christopher Curran, in reference to 90 Pompanesett Island Road. Said extension has been requested until April 12th, 2023.
Sergeant. Okay, Jim seconds. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. I want to write through these, Tom. All right, Bob, you're going to sit on the next hearing. All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing, please?
38 Fels Pond Road. Owners Michael E. Gould and Joe Robin Gould request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 116, parcel 22, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay. All right.
Hello, my name is Rob Sykes. I'm a surveyor. I live in Sandwich, and I'm representing the Goulds, who are proposing to add an addition to their home, and it is not conforming to the initial zoning bylaw by having a greater than 25% lot coverage. However, I understand that there's been a change in the zoning regulations to where in a flood zone, that percentage can be increased. And so, I have proposed here on my drawing, does everybody have a copy? This is the drawing, and there may be some of the house plans going around, too. And so, you can see that it's rather discreet, it's between the existing dwelling and existing garage. And Mrs. Gould is a seamstress, and she likes to make things for her grandchildren. And so, she's going to use this room to spread herself out a little bit, put another bedroom, I believe, upstairs. And I think one of the issues that we're looking at, and you may see that the health agent is calling that there is three bedrooms existing, this plan would be adding a bedroom, and the system wouldn't handle it. However, my client claims that two of those rooms are under 70 square feet and don't qualify as a bedroom. And so, if you need, would you like any more information? Jo Ellen?
Actually, a couple things.
Can point some things out?
You'll have to use the mic if you understand.
Oh. Joe Robin might be able to explain better than I.
And your name and address for the record.
Joe Robin Gould, live at 38 Fels Pond Road. The addition is a bedroom and a bathroom. The existing small room that they call the third bedroom is not 70 square feet. It's about 60-some-odd square feet. So, really was sold as a three-bedroom, but legally was a two-bedroom. So, but we're turning that little room into a bathroom anyway, and we're adding on a master bedroom, making the room that we're now using as a master bedroom as a guest room. So, there's one bedroom upstairs, and there'll be two bedrooms on the main floor. And then, there'll be a smaller craft room built in that space between the garage and the house, but that will also be under 70 square feet.
So, presuming that that's acceptable solution to the bedroom problem, we are left with the lot coverage issue now.
What's the actual size of the lot?
Pardon me?
What is the actual?
23.
It's 100 by 100, so.
It says 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's 10,000 square feet.
Okay, I saw something earlier, it was something like 10,016 or 10,016?
It's 100 by 100, and it's square, so it's 10,000.
Okay.
So.
What's the max lot coverage for 10,000, David?
25%.
And 10,005 square feet is 20%?
Well, the lot coverage as shown on the drawing I made, the existing lot coverage, 22.5.
Right. Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out, when does it go from 25% to 22%?
Excuse me, from 25 to 20 on lot coverage? Is it 10,000 square feet exactly?
It's by.
Or is it less than 10,000?
Is it different in different neighborhoods?
Yeah, it's a different.
Because Pompanesett would be different.
Pompanesett, everything in Pompanesett is covered.
Yeah.
Through the Pompanesett over a district.
This is.
Anything outside under 10,000 square feet is 20%.
Is this in Fels Pond, is this in special permit?
It's not part of Pompanesett.
David, what do you think the lot coverage is?
New Seaver's.
Oh, that's why they're here.
I thought 10,000 square, I think it's in the footnote.
It is.
I think it's 25%.
Yes. Yeah. I concur.
So, it's 10,000 and under?
Yes.
10,000 and under.
Okay.
So, 25%, but he's depicting the fact.
Can I ask, Bob, is the patios, did you count that as towards lot coverage?
No, it's a cobblestone patio.
Yep, we're trying to make it better.
I don't know, do we want to ask questions now, Mr. Chair?
Have you, you all said?
Well, I leave it to you to interpret that rule that Dave has pointed out to me, that within the flood zone, the 25% somehow.
Yeah, the way I see it is that it is a finding by the board, whether it's more detrimental.
If I can just piggyback on that, please. As one member speaking, oh, due to a remand from a judge, which I far by, from far by Harvey me, or why should I, or could I, you know, second guess a judge, and I agree with his decision, this document that you give us, the site plan, clearly has to depict lot coverage 100%, which is pre-existing non-conforming, both existing and post, pre-and post. Then, it should say something like, and this is something I think the board has to look at, where it's the 22.5 and 28.9, I'd like it to say something like lot structure coverage. Why? Because there's no definition in our zoning bylaw about lot coverage, lot structure coverage. But it gives me a determination as to what's going on in this lot, as far as how much of a building is being put in the lot.
I couldn't agree more. Just because you're in the flood zone doesn't give you a free pass to go as big as you want.
So, as one member, I can say that this plan should clearly depict 100 foot before, 100% before, 100% after. But I'd like it to say also lot structure coverage 22.5, and the next statement, which is lot coverage, if you propose at 28.9, which I would not be in favor. Because you're exceeding the 25%. Go ahead.
Well, I'm seeing a discrepancy, which might help you, I don't know. Number one, did you include the bulkhead in the lot coverage? Because the bulkhead doesn't have to be included in the lot coverage. But the bigger one is, if I'm looking at this site, if I'm looking at this site plan, the front of the addition is perpendicular to the garage. On the building plan, it's perpendicular to the house, which I think the site plan has more lot coverage than the building, but they don't match.
Which one?
You look at this perpendicular line, the front of the house, right here, no, no, that's not, it's perpendicular to the house, not to the garage. Here, it's perpendicular to the garage, not to the house.
Oh, I see, so you're saying it's bending like that?
So, it's more forward. On the site plan, the addition looks larger to me than it does on the, I want to show you what I'm talking about.
Well, I really don't understand, can I approach?
You're supposed to do that.
Do you want me to have him approach?
Come on up.
Yeah. I'm seeing a discrepancy on the site plan. So, if you look at your site plan, you're perpendicular to the garage, the front line. Correct? This is perpendicular to the house, perpendicular to the house. Your plan shows it this way.
So, that's what your site plan should depict right there.
So, that's more lot coverage here than what's.
That piece right there would not be lot coverage for that plan. I'm not so sure you're going to get.
I'm not sure you're going to get 3% out of it, but maybe he can, you have talked to this is Graven, Jimmy Graven, maybe he can tweak the size of the addition a little bit to get it down to that 25%? If there's a way, he can cheat some space, but that will definitely help, and if you didn't include the bulkhead. But you're not saying what I'm talking about?
I'm not seeing, no, bulkhead.
Oh, no, no, it shows on here, though. I just want to make sure he didn't include the bulkhead or his outside shower, which you can, shouldn't call outside.
But I, yeah, and I tend to concur, I don't think he's going to pick up.
I don't think he's going to pick it up, but it helps. Maybe they could cheat some things, maybe that can slide over a couple feet, you know? This is a pretty good sized master suite, maybe that could come to this corner, and I'm not telling you how to design your house, but that would definitely, between that and that, I bet you'd get pretty damn close.
So, does the board, I guess I have a question.
We have voted.
Yeah, and I, good pickup. My point is, though, these documents, this site plan, should depict the following, in my opinion, 100% of this lot is in flood plain, correct?
Yes.
So, that means lot coverage is 100%. And so, it should say EX lot coverage, take that zone, you know, flood zone right off, just say 100%. Post, and so, pre, lot coverage or post, pre and post, 100%. So, it should be before and after 100%. Pre-existing non-conforming.
He's got that.
When you look at prior to that, see your existing lot coverage, 22.5? I think that should say, subject to this board's input, existing lot structure coverage. Why? Because there's no definition of lot structure coverage. So, if there were, then we'd have to be careful, but there's no definition. It just gives us a ability to take it under consideration when we look at the plan to understand how much of the lot is being covered by a structure.
I totally agree.
So, my recommendation would be as follows. EX lot coverage, 22.5. PR lot coverage, up for discussion, you're at 28.9. My vote would be, I can tell you not to exceed 25. That's just one person.
I'd be the second person, because we've been pretty adamant about not going over 25, because unless there's a real hardship.
Set a bad precedent.
It sets a precedence, and now it's like everyone's going to come and say, well, you let them have it, why can't we have it? And we stopped that years ago.
And just because you're in a flood plain does not give you fair coverage to put the next hotel.
This is a case where the judge's decision, and I concur with what he said, what he tweeted.
This is existing.
Where you've got a pre-existing non-conformity because of that flood plain, and so, you're 100% 100%. You're at 100%. So, you do have a pre-existing non-conformity. If you didn't, we as a board would have to look at, you would be asking us for a variance, because you're going from 22.5 above the 25%. You'd have to seek a variance from this board, and this board historically has not been in favor of variances when they're doing this type of decision making. So, that being said, as one member, I'm still of that same opinion, even though the judge's decision has made us have to reconsider how we look at lot coverage. So, again, to be tried.
Which I don't think it's.
EX lot coverage, 100%. PR lot coverage, 100%. EX lot structure coverage, 22.5. PR lot structure coverage, 25%. One more. Was I clear?
Yes.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure.
We're going to be adamant about that with everybody.
I.
I agree.
Unless it's, for me, unless it's an extenuating circumstance, exceed 25 or 20 25%.
I'm not seeing hardship to go over the 25.
It's a square lot.
Yeah. And I think there's ways to tweak that plan, especially the front. I think there's ways to get it to 25.
If, I think for myself, if there is a really extenuating circumstance, more than happy to look at that situation, we just don't have it here to exceed 25. Lot structure coverage.
There's no hardship on the lot.
Would you like to maybe continue this and think about it?
Yes.
For a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, may I say one more thing? There was a discussion about bedroom counts.
Yeah, why don't we read that?
Concerned because you may have to deal with that. This board does not make decisions on bench. That's a board of health issue.
You've got to make them happy.
You've got to make, you might want to make them happy before.
It's only going to be, it's going to be a three-bedroom house.
Okay.
You have to talk to them.
Do you want to hear their comments?
They have to say?
Excuse me?
Do you want to hear what they have to say?
Okay, please.
Sharon, go ahead.
38 Board of Health, 38 Fels Pond Road. Addition can't be approved by the Board of Health. This would be a fourth bedroom on a three-bedroom system. Lot is in a Zone 2 on 10,000 square feet. No extra flow can be added, even with an IA system upgrade.
I don't know if they saw this plan, because I'm looking at this.
They didn't have, the health inspector didn't have a plan.
I'm looking at your plan, and you're correct.
It's only three bedroom.
It's been changed to a three-bedroom. I don't think they'll have an issue with this.
Well, I think that.
You just have to talk to them.
That has to be retracted, and it has to say, well, we can't tell them what to say, but we can't have negative input from the Board of Health.
Absolutely, I understand that.
We have no authority in reference to the Board of Health.
I'm assuming they saw a different plan.
Okay, well, we'd like to continue the hearing, and we'll work on the areas.
I just didn't want you to leave with just our input. You'd have to take care of that also.
Okay.
Good conservation.
Okay, 38 Fels Pond Road, conservation. Property lies within the FEMA-mapped AE flood zone and is thus jurisdiction under Chapter 172 Wet Lawn Bylaw. However, given that the proposal is entirely within the footprint of the existing hardscape, it was approved administratively with no issues.
I think that's it. Maryam, what should we have available?
Is it going to be a month? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're blown out on this.
If that's the soonest.
I'd also, for your Board of Health, maybe it's missing, I don't see a second floor plan, so I don't know what the second bedroom count would be up there.
The full plan was dropped off.
I'm just saying, it's a board of health issue, anyway. I can't confer that there's, how many bedrooms are upstairs, because this plan doesn't have a, my plan doesn't have a second floor.
What's the date? Would you, would you like us to, would you like April?
Yeah, we'd like to continue the hearing.
So, you requested the extension until April 26th, 2023?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the request for an extension from Michelle E. and Joe Robin Gould of 38 Fels Pond Road. Said extension is up until April 26th, 2023.
And it's Michael, not, Michael and Joe Robin?
I'm sorry, Michael and Joe Robin Gould. I apologize.
Okay. Okay, Jim seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes.
So, how much do we have to carve off of the plan?
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to show my appreciation for you all who've spent your time in our small government to adjudicate these things or to weigh in on these. It's a public service you provide. I recommend you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We dropped off a second, a full set of plans here. Do I need to get another set and drop them off?
Well, you're probably going to be making some changes, so whatever gets altered would happen.
Would be a full plan.
You don't want, you want all this to go away and bring new ones.
Okay.
You don't want confusion.
And in the interim, we should contact the health department and let them know.
Right away.
Yeah, yeah, I would submit that new plan to them.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Go back.
What paperwork?
Yes. No, but I think you could tweak that.
Charlie, you're going to sit on the next one?
Yep.
Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
409 Monomoskoy Road. Owners Thomas and Michelle Gard. Trustees request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the removal of an existing shed and construct a garage in its approximate location on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 124, parcel 62, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi, good evening.
We can share.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm attorney Steve Gard with offices in Hanover, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant and homeowner. With me tonight is Raoul from Cape and Islands Engineering, as well as Mr. Gard, who's sitting right back there. As the public notice has been read, and you've heard, this is a request for a finding at 409 Monomoskoy Road. The lot in question is deficient in, it's non-conforming in that it is smaller than the required area at 14,983 feet, and it lacks the required frontage at 50 feet. Neither of those non-conforming dimensional items will be changed as part of this proposal. The lot is also non-conforming, or the structures on the lot are also non-conforming with respect to the house, which is a half a foot and 9.4 feet from the sidelines, and the shed, which is a 220-square-foot shed, which is .7 feet from the sideline. With respect to the coverage, as you all know, this is located below, in the AE 11 and AE 13 zone, and it is approximately, I think it's what, about six, seven, elevation six or seven feet. So, the lot coverage being 100, as shown on the plan for both proposed and or existing, the lot coverage analysis under the bylaw with the maximum of 20% under normal conditions is 11.5 existing and 14.9 proposed. So, it would be below the 20% lot coverage as well. The application essentially is to take a garage, take an existing 220-square-foot shed, raise it, and reconstruct in its place or in its approximate location, a two-car garage of 720-square-foot footprint for a two-car garage located five feet from the property line, making that side yard setback less non-conforming from this .7 feet. The shed will also have living space above a loft-type living space or an accessory-type dwelling as well. If I could have Raoul walk you through the site plan, I think that might be beneficial, so he could point out to you what it is that you're looking at. Not that you don't already know, but I'd feel better if he had a chance to show you his work.
Good evening, Raoul from Cape and Islands Engineering. So, yes, as Steve mentioned, the proposed garage is located roughly in the vicinity of the existing shed. It is strategically placed outside of the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands. Conservation did review the project and approve the project, issued an order of conditions for this project. The other thing we're doing for this project is, because it is a two-car garage, we're reconfiguring the driveway to have access to the front of the driveway, so we're expanding a little bit of the driveway right in front of the garage doors. The grading for the proposed conditions is roughly the same as it exists. The property is fairly flat, elevations between five and six in this vicinity, so we're not changing much of the grades, and we are lessening the non-conforming setback from the .7 to the five foot. In terms of runoff, the driveways are proposed to remain pervious. Currently is crushed stone. We're proposing it to remain as crushed stone. And for the roof runoff, we're proposing to collect the roof runoff with downspouts and install a trench underneath the driveway. Because of the. Because of the proximity to groundwater, we can't go too deep with some deep drainage systems, so we have to do a shallow trench. That's all I have to add for this. Oh, oh, sorry, something else that we're adding. The garage will be constructed in conformance to flood zone requirements. So it will have flood vents for floodwaters to be able to access the inside of the garage and outside and not limit the amount of flowage that can happen. Thank you.
So the applicant sees it as, for the board's authority or purview this evening, is two questions. One is the substantially more detrimental question of whether or not raising and reconstructing a shed to a two-car garage that is going to be moved from .7 feet from the sideline to five feet from the sideline. That particular structure has its challenges because the lot width is only 50 feet. A 24-foot-wide garage for two cars, even if you turned it the other way or put the garage, put the cars on the other side and you tried to move it to the center, it would still be non-conforming on both sides of the setbacks. There's just, the only way to really make a two-car garage on this lot is to have it offset to one side so that you can get around it to the main house. So that was the first question the board, well, the finding that we think the board would need to make on a, it isn't, if they find that it's an intensification, then they would go to the second level of analysis and whether or not that intensification is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming shed. The second one is, as you have struggled with on many of the projects in this particular area and the one before us, is whether or not it is substantially more detrimental for the lot coverage, already non-conforming at 100% because it is an AE 13 and 11, from 11.5% to 14.9%. Well below what I think, from what I'm hearing, the board deems to be substantially more detrimental if you exceed the limit allowed under the bylaw or 20%. So those are the two things that I think the board would need to make findings on favorable to grant the application on our behalf. Happy to answer any questions.
How many bedrooms are allowed on this lot?
The, do we have four bedrooms, I think, on the septic system, right?
The septic system is permitted for five bedrooms. It is also an enhanced nitrogen removal septic system.
Right.
Okay, and are there any bedrooms going above the garage?
So yes, the existing house is currently a four-bedroom house and there will be a loft above the garage. So it will still remain a five-bedroom. Some, part of the history that this board probably doesn't know, about some 15 years ago or so, there was a similar application put together for another structure to be built in front of the existing structure and that's when the septic system was upgraded to five bedrooms. That other structure never got built, but the septic system got installed as a five-bedroom. The existing house with four bedrooms remained as a four-bedroom.
Did you seek and obtain an approval from this board or any other board in reference to that application?
There were some approvals, but it has since expired. No action was taken for that building.
We weren't part of that, but the previous owner many years ago got an approval for a garage on the lot.
From this board?
Yes, yeah. I apologize, if the board would like to see the special permit, I can dig it up. I don't think I have it with me, but I know I've looked at it, it's in the title.
May I read Board of Health? Because Board of Health, as long as no plumbing is added to the garage.
There'll be, there'll be no plumbing at all on the garage, right?
There are no bedroom in the garage.
Yeah, it's just a loft bedroom. I don't believe that we contemplated plumbing, right?
Be no plumbing.
So there's going to be a restroom, so there is going to be plumbing on the upstairs.
Board of Health has an issue with plumbing.
Board of Health doesn't like it.
It seemed to me we need a set of plans, first of all, right?
Yes, oh, I should have started out with.
So we can understand what's upstairs.
Yeah, and again, I apologize. In the application, in trying to get the application in as soon as we could, once we got the conservation approval, it was difficult to find an architect that was able to do that. At the end of the hearing, I didn't know if Marianne had mentioned it, we were going to request a continuance. We're not expecting you to vote tonight because we want to provide you with those architectural plans, so you can see that. And in the meantime, we will discuss the situation with the Board of Health, of course, and clarify their position on whether or not we can have plumbing out there. But we do have an architect retained and he asked that we could continue to, I think, the April 19 meeting. I happened to have a conflict that night, so I don't, maybe the next meeting would be even beneficial for them if we could go that far out.
So I have...
But before we get to that, sure.
So I have a couple, so how much of this lot is in the floodplain?
All of it.
All of it, it's 100%.
So then your lot coverage is 100%?
Correct.
So you have to correct your note, item three, right? See your footnote three?
Lot coverage is listed as 100%, both existing and proposed in the table. Is that not how you'd like to see it?
The bottom row of the table is the one that calls out the lot coverage.
So lot coverage calculation, where are you seeing it?
Right here.
Existing, proposed, 100%.
See, it says, yep.
So, all right, so it has a footnote number three though on it. It's very similar to your predecessor just before you. So if you look down at footnote number three, it says, lot coverage calculations accounting for all upland area, okay. The upland area is existing lot coverage, 11.5, proposed lot coverage 14.8. So I understand you're trying to disseminate between the court ruling, which was 100% floodplain, right? 100%. So you, I'm trying to keep us...
I agree.
So as one member, I'd rather it say, because you're coming back anyway. As I said before, lot structure coverage. And I presume your calculations are correct, at 11.5, proposed lot structure coverage, 14.8. Then you don't have to talk about uplands or anything. We understand, I would understand, I would hope the rest of the board would understand what that means. That means the lot in its entirety, right, with a structure on it, would be lot coverage of X. Not using, you were then using the floodplain in your calculations, different than the lot coverage of 100% when you cannot use the floodplain as calculation, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I see. So we'll add the word "structure" to both of those line items. Are you satisfied with the reference to 100% in the table? Would you like it to say that somewhere in note three?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine now that you've explained it. Because I went right down to lot coverage, I went down to footnote three and I see that and I'm saying, oh my God, we're back. All we're doing is a little training exercise here with people.
I think that, look, the, what I see, the lot coverage at 20% under normal circumstances, demonstrative for you. Yeah, and in essence, it's 100% non-conforming. So whatever we move that coverage around is the number that you have to decide whether or not it's substantially more detrimental, right? And I can, I get the message from the board that, you know what, if you're going to 22 in a 20 zone, it's probably going to be substantially more detrimental.
I have two others though.
So, go ahead.
Are you creating any new non-conformities?
No, we are not. In fact, we're lessening non-conformities by reducing side yard, I'm sorry, reducing the non-conformity of a side yard setback, increasing it to five feet.
So you're now putting, and you're putting flood vents in this garage, correct?
It has to be built to flood standards.
So those flood vents are in fact above the basement floor or the garage door or below the, is it a full solar? Would you have vents below it with like pre-cast concrete or how you do, how you building?
It's a slab-on grade, but Raul will explain it. He has it dialed in on how they go.
With the vents onto that grade.
Yep.
Right, the requirement for the flood vents is they have to be within a foot of the grates outside or the grates inside. The grate inside is a slab of the garage. So it has to be, the bottom of the vent has to be within a foot of that slab or within a foot of the grates outside.
So I was just, because I don't have a set of plans, I didn't know whether you were trying to, there's a couple of ways it could be done, but I get, I get what you're doing.
I think that the box with the 5.3 represents the flood vent, right?
The 5.3 are elevations for the driveway.
But what did you, but that, he just pointed that out. That's, the flood vents will be in that general vicinity of the...
They have to be below 6.3.
Got it. So the architectural plans will show that. So another reason why you need to see the plans.
Let us have one and maybe I just need clarification. On your table, the existing, where it says 1,723 square feet.
Right.
100%. Is that 1,723, the house and the deck?
House, deck and shed.
And shed. Okay, you get the shed now, okay, that's why, because the math wasn't working, I didn't take the shed into account because the, all right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because I took the proposed and the size of the garage, the math didn't work, but now it does because you have the shed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, as far as I understand, there's only two things changing. The little shed's gone, the new garage going in.
Yeah, and the garage is...
Where else is it?
Yes, correct, yeah, we're not touching anything else, right.
I'd be very curious to see the plans.
Yeah, and again, I want to, if the board would indulge us for this presentation, I thought it would be better than continuing. I thought this way we can get some feedback. The Board of Health issue came up, so we can deal with that before the next meeting and hopefully we can close it out next meeting with the plans.
Now, you mentioned in this, in your presentation that you're not available for the next week.
I'm not available on the 19th.
I'm not sure you could even get on the next meeting, but...
Yeah, the 12th was too soon for the architect because I tried to get on the 12th because I'm available for that one, but it's too soon for him, so we were going to do the 19th. I have a conflict because I already have a Kingston ZBA hearing on the 19th. So what's the meeting after that, do we know?
April 26.
Oh, the 26th, that would be fine if that's, if the board sees fit to be, that is a good schedule or if you're not, you got room on that one.
Okay.
Thank you for the...
Do you want to request that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, thank you for accommodating.
One more item I think we haven't talked about. The other pre-existing non-conforming is a setback to wetland for the same reason. The wetland being the land subject to coastal flowage, that setback is non-conforming as it's zero.
That's the zero.
All the structures are in the floodplain, so that setback is zero. The proposed and the existing are the same.
But it exists at zero.
It exists at zero.
So it's a pre-existing non-conformity that you're not expanding on.
Right, yeah, right.
Understood.
But it's a good point, that is, it's a good point in your bylaw.
Well, yeah, if you say the whole lot's in the flood zone, technically, whatever's in that, on that lot is at zero setback to the wetlands.
Yes, correct. It's not, it's in it. It's in it, exactly, yes, correct.
This might be, just a question for Raul. I see you pulled it off the lot five feet, you're 21 feet, and I know it's a very narrow lot, I know Monomus Goy. And I see your septic cleanout. Is there any reason the garage couldn't come more, get closer to the 15 feet on the other side to get more space from the five? Is there something to do, is there a hardship because of the septic?
Trying to...
We're trying to get access to the back of the house. So we have that approximately some 12 feet on that side of the garage to get access to the back of the, to the back house.
Okay.
It still preserves some of the vegetation that exists also on that line.
I see a row of abrevites there.
Yeah, there's a mature abrevites and creates a nice buffer and zone and then...
Yeah, I know it's now, I just wanted to get some clarification on why the five feet.
We did, it's a good point. We did play with that and tried to move the garage around and then we talked to the owner and it really has to do with getting around the garage to the front of the house. And aesthetically, it's going to block, it'll block the view of the house as well. You're going to pull up and you're just going to see the garage. So it's nice to see, you'll be able to see a little bit of both when you pull in.
Charlie, do you have a question?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Any other questions here?
Conservation approved this project, March 9.
Anything from Board of Health?
Board of Health, we, we read. They have a problem. They have a problem.
Why would they have a problem? Okay. So we're requesting...
A continuance to the 24th, Marianne, is that what you said?
I'm not giving away. I'm not giving away.
26.
And what is your name, sir?
Attorney Steve Guard, G-U-A-R-D.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry, Charlie. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Attorney Steve Guard's extension, request for an extension in reference to Thomas and Michelle Guard of 409 Monomus Goy Road. It's in reference to a written finding under Section 174-17. Said extension, a request for extension is up until April 26, 2023.
Okay, Jim Silicones, Charlie had a vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Vote the board?
Thanks.
Thank you, good luck.
We're not done yet.
I know, you don't want the next one. I think it's fairly close to this one, isn't it?
It's right next door.
Brad, you're going to sit on this one. Sharon, do you read the last one?
411 Monomus Goy Road. Owner, MT Guard LLC, requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a detached garage and second-floor accessory apartment on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 61-0, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay.
Good evening again. For the record, Attorney Steve Guard, representing the owner and applicant for 411 Monomus Goy Road. With me this evening is Raul from Cape and Islands Engineering and also the homeowner is in the gallery behind me. Before you this evening is an application for a special permit to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential dwelling and add to that a garage and a shed. The, the property is non-conforming as to frontage at 50 to 50, what do we, I have it written down here. 50.2 feet and it's non-conforming as to area, 14,884 feet. It is non-conforming as to the side setback at 3.8 for the house and 3.9 for the shed. It is also, of course, like the application before, before this one, it is non-conforming in that it is entirely located within the AE 11 and AE 13 floodplain. That having been said, by way of analysis or example, the existing structure coverage is 6%. The house itself is 900 square feet. The proposed final lot structure coverage will be 19% at 2,776 square feet. The house itself has reached the end of its useful life. It is not salvageable and must be replaced. It has not had any repairs or maintenance done for an extensive period of time. The shed itself, the garage is five, was proposed garage is 576 square feet and the shed takes up 220 square feet like the other one. So that gets you to the entire lot coverage. At this point, I would say that the, again, like the previous application, the board would need to find, make findings in the special permit grant that the increase of a lot, lot structure coverage from 6 to 19 is not substantially more detrimental or within the authority of the boards under the special permit, as the special permit granting authority, allowing the shed, the garage to exist in the, is the, at the setback proposed, which is, I have this in here, what's the setback proposed, Raul, for the garage?
For the garage is setbacks 5 and 47.
Let's see. Oh, yeah, the garage is going to be five feet and 27 feet. So those are the, in the house, the new house would be four feet and 16 feet and the shed would be two feet and 38 feet from the side. That having been said, I would turn the mic over to Raul to walk you through the plan and describe for you the site plan layout as well as some of the construction, floodplain construction mechanisms employed for this particular project as it is a complete, ready to reconstruct. I would also say that this, like the previous application, does not have architectural plans in that the same architect that was retained for 409 is retained for 411 and has requested a bit more time to develop the plans for you. The house itself, I did some analysis on the street just to see what the neighborhood would warrant for the size of the house. I think it's fair to say this house will be roughly 2,500 square feet in that range. 2,500, under 3,000 square feet totally. Going through the street on, you know, just from 385, I think I did, down to like 435, there are some really big houses down there. I'm sure you know, 5, 6,000 square feet. So this house, in its proposed development of the site, in the applicant's opinion and in my opinion, would be, would fit into the neighborhood quite nicely. It's a, it will be on the smaller side of most of the houses in the area that have been redeveloped. Some of the existing homes are, there's a few of them that might be tweaked a tiny bit smaller, but there you go.
Raul, for Cape and Islands Engineering, one of the things that is kind of different from the project that we just presented at 409 is that this one is raising the existing dwelling and replacing it with a new dwelling. This one is within the buffer zones to conservation. It also got approvals from conservation and order of condition was issued for all the work that is happening on the property and for the work that's happening within the 100-foot buffer to the wetland. That part, that particular application requires some mitigation plantings and the project proposes some mitigation planting to compensate the development in the 100-foot buffer zone. Another thing we're adding to this project is that we are removing the existing Title V septic system and replacing it with a five-bedroom design enhanced nitrogen removal septic system. Currently, the system on site is Title V, not an enhanced removal system. This will benefit from having an enhanced nitrogen removal system. We're using the existing entrance for the driveway. enhanced nitrogen removal system. We're using the existing entrance for the driveway, aligning that driveway and kind of curving around for the existing or the proposed garage in between the proposed garage and proposed shed. This garage, unlike the application we just presented, this is a one-car garage. So we are eighteen foot in width for this garage. The driveway continues on to the proposed house. The proposed house first floor has to meet floodzone requirements construction. So that first floor has to be set one foot higher than the floodplain. The house traverses two different floodplains. The worst of the two is the AE elevation thirteen. So that first floor has to be at least elevation fourteen. The grades on the site similar to the neighboring property is around five and six. What the applicant wants to do at this underneath this house is to use the underneath as a carport. So we have a carport underneath it. The first floor is another nine feet above that. And there'd be staircase, but the staircase don't have to be enclosed. If they are enclosed, then they have to have flood vents. The garage also has to have flood vents. The slab is going to be fairly at grade. It is going to have flood vents. A shed is not livable, so a shed does not require to have flood vents. The septic system is located as far as possible from the wetlands as far to the east as possible, close to the road. It's roughly in the same vicinity of the existing septic system, except that the existing septic system is not a five-bedroom, and it's not an enhanced nitrogen removal. So we're replacing that with a new system at this location. The grades are fairly the same as the existing. Slightly over the septic system, we have to raise the grades just to get enough separation to groundwater for the septic system. So we're raising the grades, but not my budget. The existing grades at the road are elevation seven. Just above the septic system, we're proposing elevations of seven point nine and eight point two. So we're roughly going up another fourteen inches in the center of the septic system, which is about thirty feet away from the property line on the street side. So it's not a big raise in in grades. But that's just to get separation to groundwater. There'll be all new utilities to this property because right now the existing utilities, we don't really know exactly where they are, and this amount of construction will definitely rip them all out. So we'll have all new utilities for the site. Thank you.
The one thing I think I forgot to mention is that, like the other garage, this one will have living space above the the space above the garage. It's is proposed.
And one thing I should have said in the last application, too, is I think the zoning enforcement officer, you might want to meet with him in reference to any space above that garage, accessory partner, et cetera, because he's the one who makes the decision.
Yeah, and and we have spoken, and he's been extremely helpful in this matter. But we felt that both of us felt that we should at least disclose that to you.
No, I think it is a
Yeah.
This board understands, too.
Correct.
I'm just saying that he's he's like the last call on the accessory
He is. The bylaw gives him the authority to grant it. Correct. And we we I understand whatever grant that you make doesn't, I mean, doesn't abdicate the authority to from the building inspector. We will go before him to get the permits appropriate.
I just want to I want to point out the other shed where it's I have to like I would tend to think since it's over two hundred square feet, Raul, that has to be brought up to building code. So I would if that has to have its own permit, it's not like if it was two hundred square feet, it could be built without flood vents, I would think. But now that it's two hundred and twenty square feet, I think flood vents would be applicable.
Even though it's on sonotubes?
It has to be built as if it was a garage. It's not a shed anymore.
Now, that's my question because it's always two hundred square feet. Are we good with two feet off the lot line at that size?
It is we it would have to. That's up to the board, but
What's pre-existing, the two feet off the
It should have a fifteen-foot setback, but
The existing shed is six feet off the lot line. In the garage, it's going to be five feet. That's another question.
Well, the first question I was going to ask is, are you creating any non-conform new non-conformities? And I guess your answer, sir, would be yes.
True.
I'm hoping it's no.
Yeah, I don't I don't know why. Yeah, I would say that that's not we
Because you understand, a range replacement, a new non-conformity means variance, which means you've got a problem.
Oh, I I don't. I know. I know fully well. I know. I know fully well. Yeah, no, I know fully well. I think that was probably an oversight on our part. We thought I think maybe we carried over a setback from the property next door. But it looks to me like we could slide that shed away from the property line with that with pretty ease.
I agree. What about the garage? The garage is a foot more non-conforming than the shed is.
The garage right now
Can you slide the garage a foot to get it to six feet?
The garage is five and twenty-seven proposed, and it's I think what we were doing with the existing shed, which is three point nine, we were just holding that line from three point nine.
Oh, I thought the existing shed was six. Oh, it's three.
Yeah, the existing. Yeah.
No, it's three point nine. Okay.
So you're going to be able to answer the following question. You creating any new non-conformity by saying no?
Once I move the shed, the proposed shed, I can say no to that.
That will be a question asked at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
I'm good with the garage. I saw the six. I didn't see the three point nine.
I agree.
No, that's a good question, though. The the we're holding the setback on the shed.
What's the six measurement? Six-foot measurement?
Six with a star.
Right next to the shed.
That's a grade, I think, Raul, right?
Is that a grade?
Oh, yes.
That's a grade.
Yeah, those those elevations that kind of grade out with a little X, those are spot elevation, ground elevations.
Yeah. Yeah, three point nine is actually on the outside of the lot line. You can see it.
Yeah, I missed it. I saw the six, and that's all.
We're moving the shed.
So the same statement that was made in prior application, which is the lot coverage issue?
Yep.
Pre- and post, et cetera, in reference to lot structure coverage?
We will do that. Yes. Got it.
And the house is going to be, I understand now, on piles?
Yes.
Be able to park underneath?
Yeah, like a carport underneath is what we proposed for that area. So it's it won't be obstructed to water flow or anything like that.
Now, the garage would be the same scenario, vents venting into the into the floor.
Right. It'll be wet wet floodproofed is what they call it. Yeah, wet floodproofed.
One clarification, and I guess Dave can correct me, because this is A zones, AE zones, not B zones. The house doesn't have to be on piles.
That's my question.
Right. It could be a concrete foundation.
But it has to have
Has to, yes.
Right.
That's why I was just going to ask that, because why are you going to V-zone?
Right, not not a V-zone, so piles are not unless
Right, but it's still elevated with nothing on that first eight or nine feet or whatever to get above that first floor.
Right. It's going to be up there.
There's nothing in there per se
Fourteen feet. We got to get to fourteen. Yeah, we got to get to fourteen feet.
I think the difference would be if it was if it was on piles and and it was a non-pervious floor, I think I think this would create
Story?
A story above grade.
So watch your plans, guys.
Yep.
The zoning enforcement officer just said that 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 first elevated area is considered a story.
Even closed with a slab, it's a story.
Because it's a floor.
So if if it's done with a concrete foundation with flood vents, that could be considered a story. Is that what we think?
I would I would I would say that that would be a story above grade.
Story above grade.
So watch your peak height.
Yep.
And then your second floor, your square footage.
You allow building access, and you allow limited stories.
Yep.
The third floor would have to have
Yeah, almost no roof at all.
So we'll we'll work on the building height with the architect and and we'll look at the bylaw. How is it made? Average grade?
We're going to want to see an elevation on a plan depicting because of that determination what that elevation is going to be inclusive of that first story.
For sure.
Plus, that third floor, square footage-wise, has to be what, fifty percent of the floor below if it's a third story?
Let's not let's not call it third floor.
So in other words, you could have a story and a half.
Max is two and a half stories.
Right, two and a half.
You can have two and a half stories.
Yeah.
So I mean, prior to the
But if you put the cement, that's one story.
Right.
Scott was indirectly saying that by saying you make it two and a half because it's half of that second story.
Yeah, that's what I meant by fifty percent.
Yep. Yep. No, the fifty percent of that half is of the floor below.
That's what he was indirectly, he was saying.
That's the third floor, but it's a half. It's two and a half. And then we have to be mindful of
I'm sure you're aware, but just throwing it out.
Well, this is a good exchange, and and I'm always up for a spirited debate. It helps my client get it approved. But the the clarification on that first floor, we'll we'll run it by you for sure. So we get that, you know, whether or not we're going to end up with a first floor, a first story by definition on the accurate level entry to the house.
You putting dry wells?
Not dry wells in the typical sense of the drums that are about two, three feet deep. Because of groundwater, we have trenches, leaching trenches, subsurface trenches to get something that's shallow above the groundwater and spread it out on a longitudinal dimension.
Have you done any testing to understand where that elevation of that water lies?
Yes, on both of these properties, we have perk tests. We have the groundwater adjusted. So we have that elevation.
What adjustment did you use?
We used
Yeah, he's a
It was adjusted by point eight feet.
This is way above my pay grade.
So I'm sorry. I'm paying attention now. Sorry.
It is on the plan, though. We have a point eight adjustment.
Yeah, I'm looking at the perk test.
Did you say point eight?
Yes.
So when did you do the test? When did you actually? Is there any modeling? Did you see any modeling in the soil?
I actually was not the one that did the test. The test was done in September nineteen ninety-nine.
I wouldn't know what was going on with that one. I have no idea. Was there any modeling in the soils? It just seems like about point eight is a very minimal adjustment.
So groundwater was observed at a depth of eighty-four inches, and it was adjusted by point eight higher. And it was approved by the health department.
Okay, well, well, but see, they're not looking really. Board of Health is, in my opinion, looking at drainage issues. They're looking at board health issues, which is
That's true. And
So I think, you know, we, you know, we should be a little bit concerned about that because if there if that well does not if that collection system does not function properly, we're adding to flooding conditions that would probably currently exist out there. So this board's always been very proactive in trying to alleviate or minimize flooding in areas that maybe already have some flooding, if you see what I'm saying.
Right. In in this case, if we're thinking of coastal flooding,
Yeah.
Yeah. The drainage system doesn't matter.
Oh, I agree. There are times that I you could do a hundred-year storm, and it's going to this whole thing's going to be underwater.
Right.
You cannot design this to a hundred-year storm.
Right.
I understand that. I get it. That's not where I'm coming from. Because you're in the floodplain. I get it. But I guess the size of the trench, whatever, I'm going to look at the calculations a little bit. I'm not asking an engineer to look at it. I'll look at it. I've done some drainage calculations in my life. What method did you use for drainage?
We use a rational method.
Oh, good. That's what I used to use. They still use that, huh?
It's the easiest one to use.
That's why I use it. That's good.
But there's there's also computer-based calculations nowadays.
And do you have Q? Do you have the area, Q, the whole thing in there?
We did not submit drainage calculation for this application.
Okay, can you can you include the calculations in the in the next in the application, please? I've got a I've got a an app that I could put that in.
What I'm getting is you're you're sort of concerned about the day-to-day rainfall and how's that going to be dealt with?
Because
Not the not the storm that floods the entire lot.
You can't deal with a hundred-year storm. It's underwater. We already recognize that fact. So you can't design a hundred-year storm on a floodplain.
No. Yeah, we can we can identify some what he's contemplating as far as the drainage swales.
It's the storm that creates the puddles in the street and all that type of stuff that people are driving down the road and say, hey, what's going on? The puddle's bigger than it ever used to be, and we only had a quarter-inch drainage. Why is that? Well, because it didn't go in the ground. Because you adjusted the groundwater incorrectly, and all of a sudden, this whole lot, it's impervious now. Most of it's impervious.
Yeah, the main reason that we're kind of battling any ponding or pondling from rainwater is by keeping the driveway pervious, crushed stone. That way, we're not increasing a lot of runoff from paved areas. The roof, we just collected with the downspouts directly into subsurface. There is an overflow for roofs because even with the design for the ten-year storm, there is a potential for that one-hundred-year storm. And even the trenches that we're doing will not handle that kind of
No question about it.
We don't want that backup to go all the way back to the roof. So we have an overflow that it becomes a surface discharge after the first flush gets into the trenches.
So
I have a question. Part of the driveway is stone. The rest of it is gravel. Is that what I see?
I think he's talking about that. This confuses me, too.
Stone and gravel is used. The terminology is used like interchangeably. Mostly around here, what they do is crush stone is what they they lay down.
So that's what you meant, crushed stone?
Yeah.
Got it. So are you I see that below the driveway, out close to Monamaskoye Road, is going to be your leaching field there?
The leaching system is right underneath. It goes beyond the driveway, but yet, yeah, right in the driveway.
Got it. Now, are you putting fill in there to raise it up?
So yes, we are going from existing grades of about some sevens and high six to eight point two and seven point nine.
Couple of feet.
Yep. Okay. David, is there an issue with putting fill in the floodplain? Do I remember something?
Not at this time, no.
Is that a proposal or something?
No, no, no.
There was something that was going to town meet. Well, there was there was a discussion, a heated discussion around the not putting fill in floodplain.
It's been rejected.
Been rejected. So that never went to town meet.
Drew approved this. A conservation approved the project.
Right. I just hadn't remembered about putting fill into a floodplain.
Could you do me a favor, please?
That had come up, what, X number of months ago?
Well, you can't in a V-zone. You can't put fill in.
Right.
Can you submit those calculations
This is a regular
As early as possible to Mary Ann so that I give you some time to take a look at them.
Yeah. One thing I would like to add about the flood zone, there's a lot of talks about flood zone volume displacement. That is used mostly for inland flood conditions. The amount of flood areas are limited. But when it is, we're talking about a coastal flood event, no matter how much fill we put in this lot, you're not displacing the ocean. So the floodwaters are not being displaced in this neighborhood because the floodwater is the ocean, which is different when you talk about the floodplains up of going up on Mashpee River. It's a channelized flood area displacing floodwaters in constrained areas is different because you do displace the volume. When you're this close to the ocean, the fill that we place here does does not displace the ocean.
But you know what? I like to take when I think those equations through mentally, I take it to the next to a huge degree. And let's say this is a million-fold. Let's just say this criteria that we're that you're trying to do right now is times a million. That would that it's so miniscule. I think what you're saying is the ocean's so big, it's so miniscule, it's not even measurable.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So
But if you expand it at times ten million, it would have an impact.
So if you think about the seawalls in New Bedford,
Yeah.
They're protecting New Bedford.
Right.
They are displacing or they essentially displace a lot of volume because they're protecting the city of New Bedford.
Because the size of that.
And the volume that would occupy that bay
Right.
No longer
Which if you took this volume and multiplied it times ten million, you just created a seawall in New Bedford.
Right.
That's my point. So if we took that theory, if we took that theory and we approved ten, and we never would, I just I take things to the extreme to understand when people say what you're saying. If we if we approved ten million of these applications, we would in theory create a New Bedford wall.
Yes.
Thank you. That's my point. But so it's so miniscule, it's not really it's not really measurable.
Right. I I've been asked to provide those calculations before.
Yeah, and I totally understand your theory.
It's kind of illogical.
Yes.
And then, well, Board of Health, septic's approved for five bedrooms. They are asking
for floor plans for both structures.
Okay. And would you like to continue this to
Yes. The applicant would like to continue this public hearing to April twenty-sixth.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's. I'm sorry, I'm school life.
Attorney Steve Guard.
Attorney Steve Guard. Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's attorney, Mr. Steve Guard, and the applicant is MT Guard LC of four eleven Monamaskoye Road. His request is to extend his request for a special permit under section one seventy-four seventeen one of zoning by law up until April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Jim seconds. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yeah.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll see you in a bit.
I'm a little slow with calculations. The sooner the better, please.
Good night, everyone.
I reckon we'd never continue every single year. If eighteen years
You never did what?
If ever, eighteen years, ever continue every year.
We didn't continue every year.
Yes, we did.
Did we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Every hearing was.
Every single hearing.
We didn't go to any.
Set a record.
Isn't that good though? Records are good.
It's on the clock tomorrow, aren't you?
Okay, let's get some paper back here.
I'll, I'll get you this.
Were just coinciding, was that what you said last time?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated March 8, 2023.
Second?
Jim Secondes, all in favor?
Aye.
Did we all sign our forms?
Yes.
Yes.
I did.
Okay, anything else? Were we missing anything?